Do you need a agenda?
I feel like I have.
No.
Okay.
I should take what.
More paper work.
I don't have.
All right.
I hope she did. Because I sent you the link. It's like me.
Yeah.
At the beginning. I shared some information with her. And I'm sure that Kristen gets it. She can either reimburse her or.
Yeah.
But yeah.
You have Kristen, though?
Um, no. Pretty much.
All right.
We're good?
We're good.
Wait, Diane still. I even turned it on. I'm a professional.
Diane.
Are you even waiting to start it?
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Okay. We call this board meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on November the 12th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, independent, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. Meeting goals.
Welcome to the Boston School on this nice fall night. Tonight, we're going to hear from the Boston School team here shortly about their strategy as they continue to swarm and rise, as well as we'll be looking at the 2025-2026 school calendar, which is always a big conversation, as well as evaluating and determining next steps for facility planning.
The pride award.
We have a lot to celebrate across the Nelson County schools, and some of that work is about the people. Not only we had a number of students that performed at the state and national levels over the past few months, we want to celebrate some of our employees. We'll start with Ms. Amber Bowman, who is right here at the Boston School. We'll also be celebrating Mr. Nathan Purdue from Bloomfield Middle School, Holly Smith from Thomas Nelson High School, and Scott Thompson from the ATC, part of our Heavy Equipment Pathway, and finally, fittingly for Veterans Day, and a team that's really grown, our ROTC program, at a very high rate over the past two years, Mr. Craig Davis and Jason Rowe. We want to celebrate all of these two members across the Nelson County schools that continue to grow with our district.
Okay, so moving on to the Boston School dashboard.
We're going to welcome up Ms. Hope Doherty and Ms. Nikki King, along with some of the Boston team members here, to hear about some of the work they're doing around early childhood literacy. You can speak into the microphone a little bit? You can just pull it out there, yeah. You got to turn it on, too, sorry.
Okay. I'm going to start with something we talked a little bit about last year, the Excellence in Literacy micro-credentials. So when we thought about this, we were thinking of ways to compensate teachers to get trained in the methods that we wanted them to become better teachers. So when we look at that, we decided on Letters One and Letters Two, which is a KDE initiative. That's something that's going on across the state and even the country, and also Orton-Gillingham, a multi-sensory approach to teaching reading. So what I want to do tonight is just recognize some teachers that are working on their micro-credentials. So this is a two- or three-year process, so they get compensated over those years. I didn't get to recognize Bloomfield last month, so I'm going to do them first. You'll see on the next slide. So we have Ms. Rachel Scholes, Emily Yates, Anna Wimpsett, and Laura Michaels from Bloomfield Elementary, who's working on their literacy micro-credential. And here at Boston, we have Ms. Shay Lancaster, Angela Culver, Amelia Hutchins, Courtney Atkins, and Amanda Hoag. So we're super excited. We have about 50 people across the district working on this currently, hoping to get more on starting next year, and we'll continue to grow and learn from this and these priorities of how we teach reading and the importance of that. So I'd just like to congratulate and recognize these individuals who've put in an extra time and effort to become great reading teachers.
I'm Nikki King. I'm the principal here. I wanted to wear this outfit today to show you how we dress up for our Spirit Weeks and Things. This is PJ Day. So I'm dressing up for the Louis High, wearing my pajamas. That's why I am wearing this and look like this today. So this is our data dashboard. This is kind of the more global perspective with the KSA. Of course, this is, a lot of these kids are not in our building anymore because middle school has moved on and the fifth graders have moved on. But we did show a tremendous amount of growth, which we are really, really, really excited about, up 27.2 points overall. And then our reading, math, writing, science, and social studies all went up, except for science, which went down two points, which we were still very proud of. But across the board, we had positive gains in all areas, and we were really proud of all of our kids and all of the hard work that they did. So this was the KSA data, again, a more global perspective. And then the next slide is the IREDDI data, and this kind of shows where our kids are and where they are starting this year. This was the initial diagnostic that was given. We do it three times a year in the fall, when they first come into school, in the wintertime. So we're getting ready to take that again. And then at the end of the school year, at the same time that grades three through five here, we'll do the KSA, we'll do the ending IREDDI diagnostic. So this is kind of where our kids are for reading and math, kindergarten all the way to fifth grade, starting out the year. So we have, below grade level is the green, and then the gray, and the yellows. You can kind of see where our students are, and then we're going to take that data and use that and push them forward and grow them from this. So we are going to take some of that and then look closely into reading, primarily early literacy, and Angela Culver is going to start us off.
Hello, I'm Angela Culver, the literacy specialist. So last board meeting, we heard about EL, and that kind of hits the second, or the last two pillars or components of literacy, which is vocabulary comprehension. So our first-grade teacher, Ms. Hutchins, is going to let you all know what she does in her classroom for phonemic awareness and phonics.
Hello, as she said, I'm Ms. Hutchins. I'm a first-grade teacher here at Boston. We utilize both Haggerty and UFLA for our explicit and systematic instruction. So we have Haggerty for our auditory drills, and we use those to draw on that spoken language aspect. Can I connect the letters to their individual sounds? So if I said "cat," my kid can say "cat," blend it together, and then even replace some sounds. We also utilize the UFLA. UFLA is going to draw on that ability to decode the word and encode it with that same letter-sound correlation. This is also where we're looking, can they identify consonants versus vowels, building those CVC words, and then building on those more difficult patterns of the CBCs? And I'll turn it back over.
I think we've seen, I think too, Ms. Doherty could speak to more of this, and Ms. King, but I think the UFLA program we started last year with fidelity across the district, and we're seeing significant growth in that process. UFLA stands for University of Florida Literacy Institute, and it is connected to really a nationwide approach as we continue to look at the science of reading. And we've seen very positive results from this over the last two years. It's also a very highly-resourced curriculum that provides the teacher with really a great amount of direction and support.
Yes.
Anything you'd add to it, Ms. Hutchins?
My kids are doing great with it, actually. So, I mean, as long as they keep doing great, then I'm loving it.
So as she said, she uses Haggerty and UFLA in the classroom. So when we find that kids might need a little bit more support, then I can work with them, and I actually use an Orton-Gillingham approach, and that is multi-sensory. So we do lots of repetition from what they have done in the classroom, but we might use it in sand, we might use rhyme and song, textured crayons, just as many repetitions as we can, and the many different ways so that we can get it in their brains. It helps me give them an individualized plan, and they're always small group, sometimes even one-to-one, so that we can work and work and work, we just, every day. Then, and more additional supports is, as a literacy specialist team, we got together to partner with families, and we created this Read at Home backpack, and it has reference cards in it, and has all those pillars of literacy on it. And it defines it for parents, it also has activities, resources, little QR codes that they can scan, take some to activities, so that they can work at home as a family, games, things like that. We put whiteboards in it, we put erasers, magnet tiles, just all kinds of things that they can do at home, make it fun, so they're still getting lots of tiered levels of supports. And that's all.
Any questions or further dialogue?
I would ask, so when you are meeting with parents, I'm assuming you're meeting with parents that need that additional work at home, what type of feedback are you getting when you give them the backpack? Are they understanding the process? Do they, they sort of?
They really like the QR codes. A lot of them didn't know, actually know how to use them, but whenever we worked with them and showed them, they were like, oh, and then it sends them right to somewhere that they can pull. A lot of them were like, I just don't know what to do at home, so they did like it.
And then are you seeing, because they're doing things at home as well as at school, are you seeing that sort of pivot in the positive direction with students and seeing them more engaged and basically jumping ahead in their part, in the setting, I guess?
Well, we have just sent these home, like within the last month, but I did have a student yesterday that said, I'm going to show you a game that I beat my mom at. I was like, okay. He said it was on that, in that bag you gave me. I was like, okay. So they're doing them, they're liking them, they want to tell me all about it, so.
I love that we're able to actually provide that, that support, because I think sometimes we just say, go home and read. This really gives that extra bump, and actually just direction that I think a lot of us need as parents, maybe.
I just want to add, this was part of a state initiative as well, but what we did, the state put out these huge packets of paper, so we'll say there's other districts that are sending home huge packets of paper, and I know me as a parent, when I get a huge packet of paper, I throw it away, or it goes in between like my seat, like it never comes out again. So like she said, the literacy specialists, we got together and we created these, and if you get the early literacy, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, you get those little cards, it's similar to that, but if your kid needs to work on phonemic awareness, they get the phonemic awareness deck, and it has just quick, you can pull it off the fridge, and you can say, I'm going to do this, or things I can do in the car. And then we added those kits so that they don't even have to go out and buy anything to do the activities. So really, it was just an all-hands-on-deck approach across the district to make it easier for parents and to let them know what your kid needs help on, what are we doing at school, and how can we partner with you to make it a partnership, a true partnership.
I would like to see like feedback also, if maybe at the end of the year or after they meet their milestone, to see what they would like to add to that, what would be.
Well, and part of that will be, as, we're also using a program called STAR with these students, and it's actually tracking them on their individual goals. So we know exactly, we have IREDDI, and then we know exactly which digraphs they need to work on, or which CVC words, or all of those things. So when Angela works with a kid, she is working specifically on that child's skills that they are deficient in. And then we're able to print those and give those progress reports to parents, and even after that next IREDDI round, we'll send those home, so we'll be able to get some feedback to see how they're growing, how they've helped at home, and then is there something different we need you to work on with them? So it's exciting.
Great work.
Thank you all.
Thank you for the Boston team. You guys did great.
Thank you. Love the pajamas, by the way.
They look very comfy.
Okay, moving on to guest comments. Thank you for attending our board meeting. Any person wishing to address the board may do so, but following the following rules. If you're representing yourself, you're limited to three minutes. If you're representing a group, you're limited to five. To step forward, state your name and address, whether or not you represent a group, the name of the group. I think you all know the, know what we do. All right, so first on this list, the list I can read, is Amy Durbin.
Amy Durbin, Coxas Creek. I'm speaking on behalf of a group.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Amy Durbin, a parent, grandparent, and team member of the Nelson County Schools. I'm a 1991 graduate of Nelson County High School. My son is a 2013 graduate of Nelson County High School, and my daughter is a 2015 graduate of Thomas Nelson High School. Both of my children attended Coxas Creek Elementary and Bloomfield Middle School. As a parent, I was highly engaged in our schools and continue to be today. I know strong public schools can transform the lives of our students, and I have witnessed this as a parent and an employee. As most of you here also know, I have sat in those chairs for the last three years and watched every board meeting. In August of this year, I chose to begin to speak up at guest comments and tell the truth about what has been happening in our school board. I chose to speak because I cannot forget your words and I cannot forget your actions, actions that have cost taxpayers and students millions of dollars and years of delayed opportunity. But today, I am hopeful. I am hopeful because people across our community had enough courage to fight against corruption. I am hopeful that our future will now look different. I am hopeful that we can begin growing once again. I am hopeful that we will have at least three board members that will support our students, teachers, and staff. I am hopeful for people on our board that are sincere in their work. I am hopeful that parents will be able to put their trust in our school board. I am hopeful for a board that sees the value in every child. I'm hopeful for a board that respects a cross-country runner as much as a football player. I am hopeful for a board that celebrates how kids take care of one another, not portray them as predators. I'm hopeful that we can see smart and thoughtful dialogue on the board. But with all the hope I have in my heart, I'm still concerned. I'm concerned because there will still be two people on our board in January that have actively worked against our schools and continue to ignore anything that's positive. Even with all of my concerns, I'm hopeful for a better future. I'm hopeful that we will have at least three board members that will mean what they say and say what they mean. I'm hopeful for a board that will be driven by values and principles, not personal agendas. I am hopeful that together, we can begin to heal.
Next, we have Bill Osborne. But I don't believe that he's here, so. Okay. Next, Tiffany Clark. She mentioned she wasn't coming, so I'm, let me confirm, she's not here. Okay. Jo Pink.
I'm speaking for our group today as well.
Okay.
I'm here again tonight to advocate for access and opportunities for all students, no matter where they live or what school they attend. All students includes every student that attends Nelson County Schools and the ones who have chosen not to attend Nelson County Schools. I'm asking the board, look at how we can, how we can create sustainable feeder patterns for schools. The system currently sets up West Side schools and students for failure. These students include students from Boston, New Haven, and the Coxas Creek area that live west of 31E. These students have consistently been underserved and undersupervised. We make kids from the West Side go through multiple transitions, attend schools that are not on their side of the county and that were not designed to represent their communities. We bus them further to ensure that students on the East Side of the county have opportunities where they live and in a school that represents their community. The board has made these decisions even after knowing that the number of students choosing to leave our district because of their rash unilateral decisions, after administrators and teachers have said over and over again that we need sustainable feeder patterns and systems that allow educators to collaborate. Educators and families advocated for years that we could provide amazing experiences for students if we have sustainable feeder patterns that allow us to be dynamic, systems that would allow us to provide challenging education to the most advanced students while still being able to provide the most support for the students who need it the most. This is something that our local planning committee had worked to solve with their board-approved district facility plan, but that was derailed after the February 2023 board meeting. We saw financial advisors that had the proof showing that we could pay for the plan, and the board made sure they did not get the opportunity to speak. Then the board moved students to OKH and looked every educator in the face and said, the every educator in the face that said that this plan will not be what's best for kids, and told us to figure it out. I've heard the board say that since putting students in OKH, that this has gone well, that they have heard no complaints. Let me say that the OKH team is amazing. They continue to make lemonade from the lemons you hurl at their way. I'm in the building at least once a week, and you can see that educators are doing all they can do to make that experience the best they can for our kids. But there are just realities that we can't dismiss. You should talk to families that have lost out on athletic opportunities. Talk to the families who, whose students have to ride a bus every day just to participate in athletic opportunities. Talk to the teachers who have to drive to other campuses just to teach. Talk to the students at those home schools who are losing out on classes because those teachers have to drive to another school to teach. The system does not create a system that allows both high schools to thrive. What is disheartening is that the board knew this and still made these decisions. They heard this from educators and parents and told us that they, the board, knew better. Then they asked us what our enrollment is and acted like they did not play a major part in why families are choosing to leave the district. We must change this, or we will continue to see families leave our district. As an educator, a coach, an athletic director, and a lifelong Nelson County resident, I hope that the future board will stop putting the students and families on the West and South Side of our county last. Those students and families are begging us to provide them with access and opportunity. We know this because we are seeing them choose to leave our district to find those accesses and those opportunities. We know if, if you truly want two high schools, you will create sustainable feeder patterns that build both schools. If you truly want Nelson County to be better, you will listen to all stakeholders. We can create a system that allows every student to thrive and brings families back to our schools. Since Thomas Nelson opened, we have seen many West Side students program. Since Thomas Nelson opened, we have seen many west side students, programs, and schools achieve amazing things. Imagine what we could accomplish if we had feeder systems that unite people for long periods of time. We have the opportunity to provide life-changing education to every student in Nelson County. Let's move forward in that direction. Thank you.
I want to share how opportunities in Nelson County have impacted my life personally.
Katie, you gotta speak into the mic, thanks.
Can you hear me now? I want to speak, I want to share how, how opportunities in Nelson County have impacted my life personally. As many of you know, I've worked at the New Haven School for the past 10 years. I currently serve as the school counselor. I was a classroom teacher for four and a half years before I transitioned into this current role. In this position, I not only serve students academically, socially, and emotionally, but I also support them with personal growth, independent needs, goal setting, and I work to promote attendance. I'm passionate about this work, and I care deeply for all students. Today, I share with you a personal story regarding attendance and the impact that positive school experiences have actually had on my family. My children attend their homeschool, LaRue County High School. My daughter Bailey is a senior. My son Brock is currently a sophomore. They both spent their eighth grade years at New Haven with me and had great experiences. They would tell you today it was one of their best school years. However, we live about 50 minutes away from Thomas Nelson, so considering the distance and their drive, and potential snow and rain, we decided on LaRue County for their high school years. Brock has always struggled valuing the importance of school. Therefore, just as you can imagine, attendance has been a struggle and a constant fight in my house with him. My husband owns his own construction business and spends all of his working hours building, roofing, and putting all the final exterior touches on homes. My son values his dad's work ethic and is passionate about learning the trade, supporting himself, and earning his own money. Last school year, Brock missed an astronomical amount of school days. I was gonna put the number in here, but it's embarrassing. This is embarrassing to admit as an educator who values attendance and public education. I only share this publicly to say that it's been his involvement at the Nelson County ATC that has brought value and meaning to school. He missed those days last year and went to work with his dad. It was a constant argument, why should I go, mom? It's pointless. I'll just go to work with dad. I'm gonna be learning math and skills that I'll actually need to know with him. My husband and I not only value our children's education, but we also push our kids to strive for excellence and only expect their best. So although he missed that amount of days of school, he managed to make straight A's. This year, LaRue County supported our request that Brock get to attend Nelson County's construction pathway. It has truly changed my son's outlook of school. He enjoys going, and believe it or not, doesn't want to miss. Just a couple of weeks ago, I needed to make him a dentist appointment. He made sure to tell me, make sure it's after 11:00. That's when he gets back from the ATC. I want each of you to know that Mr. Bradley had a conversation with me about my son. He listened to my struggles and provided support to a plan that has changed my son's perception of school. I couldn't be more grateful for this and the student opportunities that Nelson County provides. Thank you to all the leaders and anybody that's put into any work with the partnerships with LaRue County. He speaks highly of everybody there. I have no doubt that if my son was not involved at the ATC, he would be facing chronic absences this year as well. However, with him spending the mornings, he's eager to go, doesn't want to miss, and excited to bring home all the cool things he's created. Shame on some of you for not taking these things into consideration when considering what school should be. A few of you representing our school should be ashamed what you've done and continue tried to do. We are thankful, thankful Mr. Bradley supports students' unique journeys and values what they're individually passionate about. We're excited for the future of Nelson County Schools and grateful for all of you that showed up for all of our kids. I know all of our Brock's are.
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody on the list, so moving on to the monthly consent agenda. Um, I know that there is a change that needs to be made to the minutes, and we've all looked at that, it was just, um, it inaccurately depicted a vote that wasn't unanimous, there were, there was, Ms. Milburn did not purchase a vote, she abstained. So we have, with that correction, do we have a motion to approve the monthly consent agenda?
I make a motion with the correction.
With the correction, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, okay? Personnel notifications. We just acknowledge receipt of those, no action is required on this one. Okay? Several grants. Ms. Shearhorn? That's good, that's a good thing.
Good evening, so first I wanted to go over the ones that we have been awarded. We've been awarded three, um, in this past month. The first one is for the ag program at Nelson County, and they are gonna purchase nine compost tumblers to be used in educational outreach to the elementaries to promote sustainability and, and composting. So we were awarded that grant to pay for those materials and those lessons. The second grant we were awarded was the Peter Marsh Foundation Middle School Music Grant in the amount of $1,250, and that will support, um, OKH's music classes, transportation to local facilities, um, to perform. And the last grant is also an, an ag grant, and it was awarded to Nelson County High School to do a pen pal project with third grade classes at Foster Heights to form relationships with them, and they're gonna actually compose a book together. And then, so that grant will pay for that travel as well as the completed book publishing.
All right.
So these are all the acceptance?
Yes.
Okay, we need to do them separately, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the first grant?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
You can approve all three of them.
We can do it all together? Okay, good deal. All right, so do we have a motion to approve all three grants?
I'll make a motion to approve all three.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, doesn't sound like any of us opposed, so motion pass.
Thank you. Um, and then we are actively getting ready to apply for the next three grants with your approval. The first one is for $5,000 for our Health Sciences Collab to go to a showcase and demonstrate all the good work that they are doing through the Up Center. The next one is a reading diagnostic grant for our elementaries to serve K through three, Tier Two and Tier Three students to purchase materials as well as to pay for additional professional development for teachers. Um, and every elementary is applying for that one. So that's really five grants instead of one. Um, and then the last one is the Fiscal Year 25 Kentucky Comprehensive Literacy Grant in the amount of $1,560,000. It will be over the next five years, and it will work on building Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three instruction and materials.
Okay, all right, do we have a motion to, um, approve the grant applications as presented?
Motion.
Okay?
Second.
All right, Ms. Milburn's second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, nobody's opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We need that million dollars.
It'd be a good one.
So for the calendar discussion, again, this is in regards to next year's school calendar, 25-26, uh, really at the end of the conversation process, and tonight we bring a recommended school calendar for you guys to hopefully, uh, look at and approve. Um, again, these folks really gathered over the course of the last couple of months, and here's where we are. So if you recall, we were really looking at two options. One was essentially a mirror image of what we're currently doing, uh, and then the other option was to start school one week earlier. It was really the two options that we were exploring. The calendar committee really challenged them to get out into their schools and talk to different folks and gather their perspective. It was really overwhelming the number of people they talked to that wanted to maintain consistency with their current school calendar, which would give us a mid-August start. Really, the consistency with the calendar was what folks were really wanting and what they heard. I think even someone at Coxas Creek conducted a survey with staff, and over 80% of people really wanted to maintain the consistency in that calendar. The other piece, we did see, uh, our current year's school calendar, we saw a little issue with our fall and spring breaks, and we saw what that looked like this past time. We are modifying that to go back on the cycle that we were on, and that first full week of October and the first full week of April would be our fall and spring breaks. Uh, the DPP's around the area, they've really put together kind of a, uh, just putting it out there, you know, what, what are the start dates, when are the fall and spring breaks, and these breaks do align with all the districts really in the surrounding area. Uh, so we feel confident in that. The, the other piece that was really talked about was making sure that we have a backpack day or a staff work day after each fall, winter, and spring break. Folks at Nelson County High are really advocating for a clean break in semester transition, which I think we are able to do here. So really what that means is they'll take classes, um, up until the end of December, and then that people will break for winter break, and then they'll come back in January to a new set of classes. This calendar does allow for that. The only other discussion that was really brought up is, uh, giving our schools more flexibility in their community table days, which I think does make sense. So currently, those days are itemized in purple as August 7th and February 26th. I think how we will approach that, or my recommendation, will be to work closely with principals to really identify what makes sense for their building and kind of see what, um, some localization with that, and then obviously advertising, um, the dates that make sense for their team. Like, one big discussion point was, we could have K5 community table days on one day and 612 on a different day to really allow families more flexibility, and they're not pressed as much time to try to get it all in one day. So this is the proposed, uh, school calendar for 25-26. Are there any questions?
No, I just got a comment. I've got some complaints about inconsistency. I'm glad you touched on that consistency. You know, I have trust teachers and want what's best here, so I, I go with that. So yeah, thank you for thinking about that.
Smart updates. I think you guys put some, uh, nice revisions from last year into this year.
All right, so with regard to that, I guess we need a vote then?
Yep, we would need a vote.
Okay. It usually tells me a recommend a motion, so I guess.
I make a motion.
There we go, there we go.
To approve the 25-26 school calendar.
All right, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, none opposed, motion passes.
All right. Teacher leadership rank change program. So, uh, we want to welcome Mr. David Young and Mark Hilton here tonight. This is Mr. Young, Mr. Hilton, uh, coming to us from Central Kentucky Educational Cooperative to talk about a really special opportunity that they've been working on, um, over the past few years in the partnership with the Kentucky Department of Education and EPSB. Um, I'll also say before the team begins how fortunate we are to work with CKEC. Not only do they support teacher leadership pathways and programming in the summer, um, but their team is very involved in our continued work as, uh, we focus on our literacy and other programs across our district. So, um, tonight, uh, David and Mark will talk really about the opportunity that we have to advance our supports of teacher leadership, as well as advance, uh, professional learning and compensation for employees.
Yeah, testing, there we go. Get it closer. Hey, so, uh, so I'll say also, I, again, I'm David Young, I'm CEO at CKEC. I've really enjoyed in the past two or three years getting to spend as much time as we have spent in many Nelson County Schools where we've been able to go in and see the really good things that you all have happening. And then there's also really a growth mindset, and we appreciate that very much. When we, when we come in and are able to provide some training, uh, the teachers and administrators are always so receptive, uh, to that and really just have their hearts in the right, in the right place and are doing a very good job. Uh, so this particular opportunity, we typically, uh, kind of our bread and butter is providing training, but more and more, we've been able to get into the realm of teacher certification, whether that's initial teacher certification, or in this case, we have a teacher leadership rank change program. And so it's an opportunity for, for teachers to develop expertise, uh, in their ability to lead others, but also in a specific subject area. So I think the one we're gonna talk a lot about tonight is educational technology and artificial intelligence, which are big time growth areas, uh, in education. We need expertise in those things in our school districts. So it gives teachers opportunities to grow in that area, but also come out on the other end with either a rank two or a rank one. So it benefits, it benefits students, it benefits schools, it benefits the district, and it benefits the teacher personally. Um, so again, this is Mark Hilton, he's the director of our Teacher Certification Institute, and I'll let him tell you a little bit more about it.
Thanks, David. So our program was approved by EPSB this past spring, so we are in our first cohort of it right now. We've got, um, districts from across the state that are participating. Actually, a couple of teachers from Nelson County are participating through Letters Program with that. Um, and so really, a couple of goals here, strengthen teacher skills as leaders, empower them to be leaders in your district as well. Um, and hopefully through that, to retain teachers and recruit more teachers. Um, and the end is gonna strengthen your instruction across your district. And so there are several components to our program. Our, uh, we have, um, yeah, so we've got, um, a, a core piece that all people go through, and then the big piece is the, the content community of practice. So thinking about teachers who would go through, thinking about artificial intelligence, educational technology, they would kind of focus their work over the course of two years through action research and so on, through that lens. Um, and so we have mentor coaching that's also a piece of it, uh, that they would engage with over the course of the two years of the program. Um, and so a timeline is there for you to kind of look at. Uh, they work on it over the course of two years, including summers, there's a little bit of summer learning, so, uh, it continues throughout, uh, their time with us. The end result is that they would have a change in rank from either rank two to rank one, or rank three to rank two, through that program. The cost is $5,000 for participant, um, and that is, and then they would have to get a, a copy of the Anchor textbook that we use as well. Um, and so I think your goal, and Ms. Riley can go and talk about that.
Yeah, so our goal is, well, first, I just want to say, uh, from a return on investments, for us, it's very high because the CKEC team's expertise in leadership of teachers is very strong, and, uh, $5,000 is a deal, uh, for us, especially with the amount of time teachers are spending with you guys. Secondly, I think we want to get a number of teachers involved, at least one to two teachers from each school, engage in these conversations across the district, so that can also flatten our summer leadership pathways. Um, our goal is to have up to 20 teachers. If we had 20 teachers enroll in this program as a maximum, that would be approximately $50,000 a year, which again, for us, is a great return on investment. At the end of that, those 20 teachers would increase in rank as well. The goal for us would be to start in January 2025, and that's why we're bringing it to you tonight. We would spend the next three to four weeks communicating and recruiting, allowing the CKEC team to go through those applications, and vet candidates to make sure that they're serious about the program and understand the commitments.
And the program's virtual, so they can do it from, from here. They don't have to come to Lexington or anything like that either.
Got it. So you want to talk a little bit about the application process?
Yes, so we have an online application, uh, they have to do, uh, that, they have to submit their transcripts, or not their transcript, their teacher certification, valid teacher certification, um, three references, um, and then we, um, they, their declaration of pathway really is them doing AI ed tech. Once they get all of that, they sign a candidate agreement as well, saying that they're gonna fully participate in this over the course of the two years, um, and, uh, then we'll accept them into the program.
I just want to make sure that we're clear, this is something that the district will be covering cost for our teachers that are interested in the program.
Yes, so, and I think, uh, what everyone should know is that we'll be, from what I understand, the first district to take this approach. Uh, so we're really setting a precedent, and I expect, uh, CKEC to have future problems in managing some of their demand on this, uh, if it's approved, because I do feel like, um, for us, uh, $50,000 is a
Because I do feel like, for us, $50,000 is a significant investment, but the return on investment due to the nature of the program and connecting people locally here will be high, high return.
Yeah. I just wanted to mention, I think it will be a model. What we see is, in any type of a certification program, when a district adopts kind of a grow-your-own model, where there's a cohort of people who work in a similar place where you can really customize the type of work they're doing, to work that needs to be done in the district, so it benefits them, but then it benefits the district as opposed to just singleton teachers from different places, which that works out fine as well. They become a cohesive unit. But it just adds a different level when a district is working with a big group all from the same place.
And I'd ask Superintendent Bradley, and it's a no strings attached kind of thing in terms of a teacher would be able to participate in this, but they're not committing to staying with the district for any length of time or anything like that. Does that ever present a, do you see that presenting a problem? Or do you think the investment would stay here?
We have districts handle that all different ways. Some do an agreement that they'll stay for a certain amount of time, some don't. But what we typically see is if a district invests in you in that way to help you grow as a professional, typically people aren't going to want to leave once they
That makes sense.
are able to achieve that.
So I do think, one question, you said we hope, we have how many teachers in the Letters training right now with CKEC?
Two.
How many were in the rank change?
I think two with us.
Well, we have two in the rank change program. Two. So there's a difference. This program is a different level of engagement, correct? Right. Yeah. So what I would say is, one thing to consider, I mean, I think it's legitimate that we consider the two teachers that are currently in the program and paying for their rank change since they're currently in it, is, I think that would probably be
Oh, absolutely.
we could consider that. They didn't sign up knowing that, so they're paying out of pocket. We would just reimburse them for that.
No, absolutely.
So that's something that I think we would consider too.
No, just two.
Mark said it was just two.
Yeah. We had two participating with us.
We have two at the CKEC.
Some may be doing Letters and getting a rank change with another co-op, and so that may be. I don't know the answer to that.
I think it's always going to benefit the students first, but the district, when you invest in your people, there's never a, and I don't like strings attached. I think that sends the wrong message. I think this is about lifting people up and giving them an opportunity to learn and engage. I am 100% like, this is a wonderful program.
I'm not sure in our meeting if we discussed EPSB, if we discussed a payback if they didn't finish. If they didn't finish the two years or the course.
Yes.
I'm not sure if we discussed that.
Yeah. So we don't, like, you mean from us, like, if we would give them the money back if they didn't finish?
Well, if the person that started, yeah, it was a payback because you didn't finish or changed your mind or whatever. Or change, let's say you changed district or you changed states or you changed life changes for some people.
Yeah. We, so we would probably take that on a case-by-case basis. They, you wouldn't pay the whole amount probably upfront anyway. It's a two-year program. So there would be, there would be a portion you would pay before the program starts and then another portion before the end of that year, and then another portion for the second year. So it's coming in smaller bits anyway, which would probably give us a little bit more flexibility on that if someone were to have a life change. Now, if someone just decided they didn't want to finish the program, that would be different than if they, than if they had to move out of state or something like that.
Well, that's what I was getting at. When we had our meeting, I don't know, whenever EPSB, when we met.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, because it's been some time ago, whether that was even discussed or not.
Well, many times we, you know, colleges have been doing, of course, rank changes for a lot of time. Sometimes we, sometimes we talk to our college and university partners, how would you handle that?
Okay.
If somebody, and many times we kind of mirror the way that our university partners would handle it.
Okay. Okay. Because there's always a possibility.
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds like a great thing to retain and
So it seems like we're going to have to come back to the question on who's currently in the program, because we have some mixed, it looks like we have up to 10 potentially additional team members, and that's something we can revisit in December. I'm getting the numbers out of, we don't know the exact number. So I didn't realize we had two at CKEC.
Yeah. The, the option, you know, Letters has been around for a little while, and the option to plug that into a rank change program existed before we began our program, so.
Yeah. The reason we don't know is because they don't actually have to tell us.
That's right.
That's why we don't know the number.
That's right.
So I spoke too soon. Right.
Are using it for a rank change.
Right. So I spoke too soon. Meaning, I don't, we don't actually know the number in the rank change because they don't have to report to us until it's ended.
No, but I think it still would be a great idea to figure that out and then
Yeah. I think we can revisit in December.
Yes. Okay.
So tonight, really, we're just looking for the, commit to CKEC, up to 20 teachers is our initial goal.
Yep.
Okay. So I think it would just be a motion then to approve the teacher leadership rank change program as presented.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So we had our facility update discussion. I believe Mr. Bradley, we'll add this piece at the end. I think it's probably fitting to go on and talk about the conversations we've been having.
Can you go back to that one picture? The previous slide? I just want to shout out those ladies on that picture right there. That's our cafe ladies, and they're amazing. Now you can get back to business.
They are quite the crew.
They are. They're me.
New device here. I'm learning how to use it.
So, Ms. Bradley, you going to get it started with this discussion?
So as you guys know, we've had multiple conversations over the past few months around the New Haven Facility project. Our goal tonight was to have Mr. Pickett here to talk about opportunity costs for design modifications. I think he's had some conversations over the last few days with different team members. And that conversation can be discussed and summarized here tonight. I think the recommendation broadly is determining long-term financial planning scenarios and determining appropriate project budgets for all projects, in particular, this project. And also, as the board chooses, discussing the context and goals of the projects with the local planning committee. Ms. Eaton, you want to kind of provide a little more context?
Sure. Well, and I've had the opportunity to talk to Jeff Pickett, and it was really helpful in just kind of looking at where we are. And just from where I stand, I think it makes the most sense just at this stage. You know, we know that there's a lot of questions. I mean, this, you know, if we kind of go back historically, this started out as a $6 million project, and then it was realized that, gosh, that would just cover HVAC. And so we did this new reimagine, you know, design for New Haven. And now we're looking at numbers and what was designed doesn't really compute with the numbers of students actually in the building. You know, in terms of our ability to make a good decision right now, I think I would be inclined to, we're looking at reseating the LPC, you know, in the, I'm assuming after January at some point. And I just think those are questions that need to be looked at in the context of the bigger picture of, you know, what the future looks like, because the costs are, things have changed. The construction costs are way more than was imagined. And so to make an arbitrary decision about how much we should spend, it just seems like it's part of a bigger picture. So I, my position would be just to kind of wait and see.
And I would actually agree with that, because where we were in '21, when that district facility plan was developed, it was strategic in the design, not just from a financial perspective, but in how projects were laid out over a period of time. And because things sort of derailed in '23, and we've picked pieces up out of that district facility plan, we're not where we were in '21. And so I think it is a time for us to step back and look at the entire district again and reestablish what that looks like going forward. I 100% agree that, and I want people to understand, this does not mean that New Haven is on the back burner, and don't let anyone tell you that. They are still high priority, just as much as Nelson County High School is high priority when we're talking brick and mortar. So I don't want people to take that away, that, oh, we're just pushing the can, we're just kicking the can, or whatever that famous term is.
And for whatever, I mean, they're, in my mind, in my one vote, I believe they're the highest priority of what we need to do. But I don't think that we need to, I wouldn't want to pursue a redoing of drawings if it needs to be part of a bigger conversation. And if we're going to reseed an LPC anyway, I think we all feel like that we have to do that next term. I think it makes sense to wait. So that would be my position.
I don't think there's anything to vote on.
Okay. Not much else on that one. Okay.
Well, the last piece, I guess just a few acknowledgements of our current projects as far as bus center, bus garage, and Up Center, excuse me. So last month, we're really talking about, I think the third to the last one, that one, yes. So this is image as of today. Last month, we were talking about a spring that was discovered underneath where the bus garage was going. That's been resolved, and really that dirt's been covered, and it's now brought up to grade. So that's where they are currently with the bus garage. The Up Center, progress is continuing with that one. The footers are being poured out in front and construction's going on as we speak. So it's ongoing work.
Can you talk a little bit about the FMD revision at Nelson County High School?
Yes. You go back to the, the other. So the other piece now is, remember we had discussions around FMD, SMD, MSD modifications with the restroom there at that space? So we've approved that BG1. We went out and got some bids from three different entities. Now we're ready to really approve a construction contract and then revise the BG1 to match that total. So really, the proposed BG1 now, we're looking at around $40,000, and the Allied Plumbing contract there is for $38,746.16. Upon approval of that, that work can obviously start pretty soon.
Can you talk a little bit about what that contract entails, just broadly, that process we went through to get there?
So Kevin Mattingly and Patrick Kundif worked with, really, first off, we worked with Stephen Ward on making sure the drawing was really drawn up to specs and making sure we had everything that we needed to be included in that process. And then utilizing those drawings, really put that process out to bid. We did have three different groups that did bid on that, and this is the lowest total in that bid of those options that we've fielded. This is our recommendation on moving forward.
This is a modification based on students with unique, diverse needs. And that's where this was all.
Really a space that they've probably needed for a long time, to be frank.
I make a motion to approve the revised and the BG1.
Yeah. So you'd really be approving two things. One, we're revising the BG1 to match that total, and then we're also approving the construction contract for Allied Plumbing for that amount.
I'll make, I'll second that motion. All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. Superintendent Bradley?
As you know, 2025 Board Calendar is something we do each November, December. You look towards the next year. While we do have some new board members coming on in January, we expect some modifications over time to the calendar. This would at least allow for a starting point for meetings that are regularly scheduled meetings. Of course, this could be revised at any time, as we've seen each month. Additionally, this does not include any work sessions because we assume that the future board will determine the need for those work sessions based on the strategic planning process. And these dates were chosen based on occurrences in the school year as well. For example, we have spring break in April, end of the school year shortly thereafter. Summer, summer breaks were accounted for at the beginning of school year. So there are second Tuesdays and third Tuesdays, kind of intermixed based on what's occurring during the school year and the time of year, basing it around holidays. Just, it's very similar to this year, except a few slight changes. Nothing major.
And I'm sure we can always revise something if it, if it needs to be, but do we have a motion to approve the 2025 Board Calendar dates and locations as presented? I'll make a motion. All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Currently, our final board meeting is December 10th, 2024, at the New Haven School as a regularly scheduled meeting. There is no recommendations to change that date at this time.
Okay. Okay. Board celebration. Do we have anybody?
Well, I have one. More celebration, but also a huge share of gratitude for our community for voting down Amendment Two across the state. The community showed up and the citizens of Kentucky showed up and protected public school funding for now. And I think that sends a huge message to people that believe in public schools and know that the work that's going on in public school needs to continue. And I'm grateful that our community understood the assignment. And thank you for that.
Great. Okay. If there's nobody else, then we do, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.[1791.84]